So, welcome to the regular work session of the Oregon City Commission. Today's date is February 10th, 2015, 5:30. Call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner West?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here.
So, does anybody have any future agenda items?
I do not.
Okay, move it on. Three discussion items, PC 15-152, the Oregon City Sign Code update. Sponsor is Community Development, Tony Conkle. We will keep our remarks as brief as possible.
Somebody's got three minutes.
So, thank you. To the work session tonight, we're bringing forward the recommendation that was forwarded by the Planning Commission. When we get started here, I'm going to turn it over to Laura Turway. She was the project manager for the sign code update and she'll be able to walk through a quick presentation. If you have questions, just let us know as we're going through it. The one comment we did hear, and you received comments about, was A-frames specifically on properties that have one tax left but multiple businesses in that. So, we're going to go, having, that's the only thing we've heard so far, we're going to go through this pretty quickly, get to that point, have a discussion about it, and then if there are more things, we'll address those as they come up. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Laura to go ahead and give the presentation tonight.
Good evening, Laura Turway, planner with the city. As you know, it was one of the commission goals to look at our signage in the city and see if there are anything that we need to change. Here's an example of our current sign code, which the types of signs that are allowed on private property, currently our sign code does not allow any signs within the right-of-way. So, the goal of this project is to come up with standards that are safe, clear, fair, and supported by the community, but there's some legal bookends that we need to know before we move forward. So, Jennifer's here to tell you about them.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Jennifer Brager with the city attorney's office. I am also going to keep it short, but I'm available for any questions that you might have. There's a few key things to remember about regulating signs that were regulated at the federal and state and local level with the adoption of this ordinance. And what this means for you is that there is a strong protection, particularly in Oregon, for the First Amendment right to free speech. And so, when you're thinking about regulating sign codes, aim for content neutrality and time, place, and manner restrictions. So, the good rule of thumb is if you have to read the sign in order to enforce your code, then you're probably regulating content, and that's not going to be permitted.
So, we regulate the number of signs on property, the location of the signs, the material, height, but just not what the sign says. We've gone through quite a long community engagement process up to this point. We started with 18 community briefings. There's a list of some of the organizations that we met with. We tried to get the word out about our sign code to anyone and everyone that we could. We put up posters, emails, websites, met with everyone that we could. We created a community advisory team, or a CAT team. We had 11 positions, and people were appointed to those positions by the mayor to represent a variety of positions. The community advisory team held an open house and a series of meetings to form a recommendation to city on specific items. There's a report, a copy of it is shown on the screen. So, now, the city staff has taken that recommendation and put together a draft code. That draft code has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, and they've made a recommendation to approve to the city commission. So, here we are. We've mailed notices to all properties within the city limits. It was over 10,700 of them, and this is our 37th meeting already on this. So, we're rounding, third base. I'm going to go through real quickly a summary of our draft code. I won't go through too many details. If you have any questions or any suggestions on items you'd like to change or talk about, please feel free to ask me while we're going through it. We'll have the next draft code available for you at the April 1st hearing, which is when we'll have the next hearing on this item. We'll have a work session at your next city commission work session regarding other policies that go with the sign code enforcement and some other things like that, but today we're just looking at specifically the code. So, here's a summary of the signage types allowed in residential zoning designations for single-family and two-family zones. When I'm looking at this, I noticed that in the proposed code, we allow a wider variety of signage types than we do in our current code. If you, we'll talk about signs in the right-of-way in a bit more detail in a moment, but you'll notice that we now allow, in the proposed code, A-frame signs on private property. In our current code, we didn't allow it on private property or in public property. The only thing that we propose to not allow, that we currently allow, are freestanding signs in residential zoning designations, which we really don't see a lot of anyway. And that was suggested in the Planning Commission.
What's the definition of a freestanding sign?
Yeah, examples.
All right. So, here's some pictures for you. A freestanding sign would be a sign that stands all by itself, that's not attached to a wall. So, it could be like a pole sign, a monument sign. It can take many different forms. A wall sign would be one that hangs on the wall. A projecting sign is a sign that projects more than a foot from the wall, so in the bottom corner, that would be a projecting sign. We have ancillary signs. One thing that we did do in this proposed code that is not really well in our code is that we define all of the sign types that you can have in clear English, that if you look in our current code, you look in one section over here, then another section over there, and you can kind of piece together in total what you can do for signage on your property. So, ancillary signs is a new term, and all it means are signs that are less than six square feet. They can take an A-frame sign, they can take this form of signs that are just poked into the ground, like voting signs or something like that, a for-sale sign, whatever it is that it says, since we're content neutral. So, for single-family zoning designations, we allow a wall sign, a couple of ancillary signs, and a sign on the sidewalk, or if you don't want a wall sign, you can have a projecting sign, say if you have a home business or something, or if you just want to express your political opinion, whatever it is you want a signage for, then you can get that opportunity. For signs in multifamily zoning designations, you'll see the trend continuing that we allow a greater amount of signage types than we currently allow. We'll allow projecting signs, or we don't allow that now, and then also A-frames on private property. So, sorry, I missed the definition of roof sign. That's a sign that's fully supported by a roof structurally. Incidental freestanding sign would be like your big sign, your monument sign, but just a smaller version. In this particular case, they're no bigger than eight square feet per sign face, so front eight, back eight, for a total of 16. One thing that you'll notice in this is the public art mural. We will talk about it in a bit more, but we will allow murals in the city, but they won't be allowed in single-family or multifamily properties. They're not allowed if there's residential, unless it's a mixed use. So, for multifamily properties, you can get your wall sign, a freestanding sign, whatever it says, a couple of ancillary signs, and again, a sign in the right-of-way. So, if you wanted to max out your signage on your property, this would be the examples of what you could do. You could always do less signs, obviously. We don't require permits for signs less than six square feet, so when we're showing you these, they don't all need permits. Wall signs, you would need permits for, sign permits. You may also need building permits as well, and then also freestanding signs, the same thing.
So, I have a question.
Yep.
So, you've seen the deal, like where you have a garage door, and it shows like a, you know, Boeing 747 coming out of the garage door, but it's all like, you know, a picture. So, that would be prohibited? Would that be considered a mural?
So, we allow wall signs. So, murals would be a sign that exceeds our wall sign, and that's either painted or done in some type of material, so not printed. So, no, you could not have a mural for residential. You could have it on all other uses. If it met our sign code for a wall sign, then you could have it. The proposed sign code for single-family residential is 12 square feet, and the wall sign code for multifamily is 20 square feet. So, you can always make it fit, it just matters how big it is, if it would be okay or not. Conditional uses are things like churches in residential zoning designations, schools in residential zoning designations, so they require approval by the Planning Commission. So, they were seen as different than residential uses and needing their own signage category, so this is what it is. You'll notice in this one, you'll see for the first time that we allow, where'd it go? Banners. There we go, temporary banners, right in the middle. So, we don't allow temporary banners in residential zoning designations, but they are allowed in conditional uses. So, you get two ancillary signs per property, and one of those ancillary signs could be a temporary banner. Banners, you can get up to twice a year, 30 days at a shot, you need a sign permit for it, though. So, other temporary ancillary signs, you don't need sign permits for, but a banner you would need a permit for, so then we could track that you only got it twice a year.
So, for instance, the fence line along Eastern School, it constantly has changing banners on it?
So, currently, we don't allow banners, and we don't allow signs on fences. Proposed code, we will not allow signs on fences, but we will allow banners placed flush against the wall.
So, Laura, now you're saying one wall plus one freestanding, so is this the number of signs that would be allowed on a property at one time?
Then, these are typical for one property with one frontage. If you have multiple frontages, like you're on a corner, you'd potentially get more.
So, you could add one, two, four, five signs?
Mm-hmm. It just matters what the scale of those signs are.
At one time?
Mm-hmm. And ancillary signs also include flags, so there's a picture of a flag on there, too.
Yeah.
So, that's for conditional uses. So, here's everything else, which is commercial mixed use and industrial zoning designations. There's a lot of green on there, so that means that you have a wide variety of signage types available to you. You'll see the check next to the public art mural, the check next to temporary banners, those are both new. A-frame signs on your property, new. Again, signs in the right-of-way, new. So, there are a lot of more options available to you than there are currently. Here are some examples of what that might look like if you were to max out your property. Again, one frontage. Wall signs, there's some standard in our code that say you can't have a roof sign if you have a projecting sign or freestanding, so that's why you'll see all the different combinations. But in each case, they max out the types of signs that are allowed. So, the ones that have the black box around them that say sidewalk, those are obviously the right-of-way signs. Are there any questions about the types of signage proposed for residential, multifamily, conditional use, or mixed use?
Questions here.
Oh, sorry, I'm not watching that.
I don't have it on either. Laura, are you finished already?
No.
Well, let's let.
Just this part.
If you have a question that's pertaining to something she's talking about right now, ask your question.
I have one question. Do you, does it allow for the signs over the road that are hanging over the road?
Our code currently doesn't have a provision for that, but the new code will. Yes. And we also have a new standard in our code for large commercial properties on arterials, so you can think of the college or Oregon City Shopping Center as a long stretch on Highway 99. You will be allowed two of those large freestanding signs. So, if you exceed over 600 feet on an arterial, you'll get an additional freestanding sign that our code currently doesn't allow. Here's a map of the properties that would it pertain to. So, just a few. Signs in the right-of-way, so our code says you need approval by the city engineer to place a sign in the right-of-way, so non-private property, the city engineer, the current one and the previous one before that, have not granted any approval for any signs in the right-of-way, so we know that all the signs in the right-of-way are not legal. We wrote code to allow three types of signage. One are those over-street signs, as well as the A-frame signs on the sidewalk, and banners on streetlight poles.
So, Laura, they have to get a permit now for an A-frame sign with the new code?
The proposed code does require a permit for an A-frame sign in the right-of-way. If it's on your property, no. And then also, one of the changes that the Planning Commission made when they adopted the code was that if you're in a residential zoning designation, you do not need a permit for a sign in the right-of-way. And part of the reason for that was that the time limitations on when freestanding signs can go up on residential is pretty limited. It's Thursday through Sunday with a limited timeframe during those days, and then also Tuesday with a limited timeframe on those days. It sounds kind of funny, but those timeframes came through, we worked with the Realtors' Association to figure out when to open houses, which is sort of the common person who would use an A-frame sign in the right-of-way, as well as garage sales and stuff like that. So, we do have standards for A-frame signs in the right-of-way as far as placement go. We have ADA requirements that you have to maintain four feet of clearance. So, here's two images. One is with the sidewalk, which is right here, so if there's a sidewalk, say for example downtown, you would put the sign within six inches of the curb, and then you have to maintain at least four feet of clearance. So, although we're proposing to allow these all over the city, in actuality, they might not have enough space to put it if the sidewalk is too narrow. If there is no sidewalk, there's another drawing for that, you just have to be four feet away from the edge of the street pavement, so we maintain that forefront clearance. Regarding signs in the right-of-way or the A-frame signs, we came up with one per frontage for a variety of reasons. There was discussions along this process about if we should allow more or none at all. I've put together for you a summary of other jurisdictions, but other discussion that we had talked about were to allow one per a certain amount of frontage, say 50 feet or 100 feet or whatever that number is, or to allow them however many pedestrian entrances there are for a building to allow that number of signage.
Can you take?
Maximum three.
As a maximum.
So, Daphne, you had a question on the previous slide, I think.
Yeah, should I, you already, should I wait till the end?
No, just go ahead and let back up.
So, on the cross-street banners and the streetlight, or the light pole banners, so we're not regulating the process of who gets to put them on there, we're just, because in the past, well, who's, it's just been the city that's been allowed to use it, hasn't it, or a nonprofit, like say like Farmers Market on Main Street? So, now can anybody, you know, get a permit and?
Yes, it's first come, first served. The city can't regulate the content of the sign, so it could say, "I love the city," or "I hate the city," or whatever it is it says, and if they sign up in line, we would put it up. If they pay the money, it meets the criteria, it goes up.
Who owns those poles?
The city does. And for, as far as the, well, there's two, PGE owns some of the poles that hold up one of the cross-street banner locations, there's two cross-street banner locations.
Right.
Malala Avenue and?
Malala, and then the pedestrian bridge. 99, yes. So, the one on Malala Avenue, PGE's involved with some of those ownership as well. All the streetlights, we've set the city into four zones, so you can reserve one zone at a time, and you can't reserve a zone back-to-back.
And is there a cost for that?
There is a cost for that. There's a base fee, plus there's a cost per pole that you, sign you put up, because the city would be the one putting them up and taking them down.
Okay.
So, private groups, nonprofits, anybody can rent or do it?
Mr. Smith?
So, the city, I guess I was wondering why, why does it specify in here that the city is installing those, because we know, I mean, I know that that's the fact, but in reading it, I can't, I'm trying to find it, where is it, what page is that?
That is a great question. We will have a policy before you next month with a public works policy for signs in the right-of-way, and it's going to be more specific as to the type of materials and design standards, and it talks about that in greater detail.
So, yeah, so it says, "D, who may place a sign," and then it says, "Permits approved on first-come, first-served basis." So, reading that, it's like, oh, well, anyone can put their own banner up there, but it's, I mean, you've got to go through the, either the permit from the state for the highway through the sign, or through the city to install it and all of that.
Maybe we could look at that to clarify and reference it back to the. So, make it clear that the city, the city is the only entity that can actually install or remove the signs.
Because, and the other thing is, the one on, the one on the Clackamas Bridge is not used anymore, correct? Okay, because there was times that Oregon City would install something, and Gladstone would take it down, or Gladstone, and it was kind of a mess.
We'll have better communication with Gladstone now.
So, that's all.
Speaking of jurisdictions, the signs in the right-of-way, it does not allow anyone to put a sign in O dot right-of-way. It's only Oregon City right-of-way, so the signs on the ground are only our right-of-way.
Yeah, O looks like Marines, they don't have such a sense of humor.
Right-of-way question. Signs that are in the back of or bolted onto a pickup truck, for instance, which we've seen all over during campaign season, they're parked on the side of the street, that's technically in the right-of-way, but not really.
It's an interesting topic, and one we discussed at great length.
It's one we need to, because then if you say no signs on trucks, well, then you, every sign in the city has a truck, so, or, you know, every truck in the city has a sign, so how do you, I don't know how you deal with that. We don't. We just, okay.
Yeah, we quickly ran into problems when we started to look at cars and when cars become moving billboards about, you know, starting to regulate if you have an OSU sticker on your car, or at what point.
Right.
It's okay, so we sort of.
Very slippery slope.
Yep.
And arguably, they are in the right-of-way in most instances, but they are also being regulated, because if you have an unlicensed abandoned vehicle in the right-of-way, it gets towed. So, they're, they're subject to.
If you're parked too long.
Regulation anyway.
Parking fee.
Right. They're just not regulated based on the sign.
I mean, if the sign blocks sightlines or something, I mean, that could be dealt with in that way. Right.
Okay, moving on.
So, we checked other jurisdictions for what they allow as far as signage on the ground in the right-of-way, so those A-frame signs, and this is what we found. There are obviously more jurisdictions that we didn't check. So, in this, it gives you a list of signs of cities that do not allow signs in the right-of-way, and then those that do, how many they allow and where they allow. So, you sort of have the split between some that only allow them downtown, some that allow them all over, some allow one for business, which then you would have to read the sign to kind of figure out if it's associated with the business, so we want to stay clear of that.
So, really, we've got, the proposal from the Planning Commission was one A-frame sign in the public right-of-way per property. The issue was, I'm sorry.
Frontage.
Per frontage. So, if you're on a corner, you could have one on Seventh, and you could have one on Main. But if you own a building that has three businesses and three entrances. Right, so that's the discussion item.
Right.
I just want to say, because Grants Pass is up there on that list, and I was there when we went through this, and one of the solutions that they came up with was you have one A-frame sign, but if you have four businesses in one property that can only qualify for one sign, what they did was they put, they broke, they had a pretty good-sized sign, and they put something from each business on the sign, so those that wanted to participate, and then others would just rotate the signs, like they would share the space, if you will, and they tended to work that out. And it, we had the opposite problem there, is that we had so many of them that people wanted to, wanted to curtail the numbers of them, so they decided to put them all on one, on one A-frame sign so that it didn't look so cluttered.
And we still allow A-frame signs on private property, so you might see a couple right next to each other, and one's pushed forward a little bit in the right-of-way, and the rest are on private property, so it is still option. Okay, moving on. Our new proposed code will also allow public murals. They would be subject to review by the Arts Commission. Planning Commission would act as the Arts Commission until the Arts Commission gets up and going. So, it's a type-three process with public notification. Existing murals within the city would be exempt, so we're talking about large painted signs. There's some criteria within our code as well.
Design criteria?
We're content neutral, so.
Right, so it could be anything.
There's a few things going on. One is that, one of the criteria is that there's no compensation received for the sign by anybody, so nobody can get paid to put the sign there. So, if I'm an advertiser, I can't pay the building owner to put my sign there. Also, the sign has to go in an easement to the city for five years, and the sign has to be maintained well for five years, and they have to show whatever it is they're going to do for maintenance. City of Milwaukee makes them do this coating on there, so it reflects graffiti and whatever their plan is. There's some criteria that say that the artist has a strong concept, and that's as close to any content that we ever get, but we're trying to steer clear of content, to be content neutral.
Wow, I have a real, hard time with that. We'll have to talk about that.
Go ahead.
You ready, Jeff?
There's not much to talk about, unfortunately. That's, we all feel the same way, but there's not much you can jump on.
Well, then maybe we just shouldn't do it.
The, so, murals, it's not specific to residential or anything like that, it's for schools, right? So, I mean, it was specific to dwellings that people live in, that you couldn't have murals, but schools and.
Churches, all that, businesses. Yep.
And, so the question, I guess, was the Arts Commission, because there is no Arts Commission. And then I see in one place, there's several places where it says Arts Commission, and there was a place where it said Oregon City Arts Commission, and Oregon City was crossed out, so I was wondering, you kind of implied that we might be talking about an Arts Commission. But up until this point, we have always relied, at least in our art projects, with Clackamas County Arts Alliance, which has stepped in on certain things. I just didn't know if Arts Commission in, written in here implies that we are actually going to have an Arts Commission, or if we're relying on another Arts Commission that's not necessarily in the city or connected to the city, and I might have a concern about that.
So, what we did is Title II of our code implements an Arts Committee, so we reference that, or Commission, whatever it is, and since we don't have one, Planning Commission would do their work. What we're not allowed to do is to pass on the ability to make a decision to another entity that's not the city.
Right.
So, that's why Planning Commission's taking it, rather than the Arts Commission. So, some city body has to make that decision or act as the Arts Committee if there is no Arts Committee.
Okay, and then the other question, I guess, would be what we call it, because we have an Oregon City Tourism Commission, and when I was talking with our city manager, he means, he said, "You mean Committee?" And I said, "Well, no, we call it the Oregon City Tourism Commission," so I think we have to be very careful. We're saying Oregon City Arts Commission, and it's not a commission, and it's a committee, we need to clean that, I mean, we need to figure that out.
Okay.
The other question I would have, there's, there's a line that says, "Public murals shall be located in a manner that's accessible to the public." And so, what does that mean? Does that mean I can go up and touch it? I can just see it? I think that's a very broad thing. For instance, if you put a mural on the wall of Railroad Avenue, it's not going to be something that people are going to be able to walk across the street to see it, you know, I mean, they're going to see it from a distance. I don't know what that meant.
Or more importantly, take, say Benchmade Knives or somebody like that, they want to put a mural on the wall, but they have a chain-link fence to protect their property, it can still be seen, but it's not necessarily accessible.
Right, so I'm curious about that.
It was written to be discretionary, so to look at the specific content or context of whatever was being proposed.
There's a lot, there's.
But we can change it if you need to.
There's a lot of references to lighting and flashing lights and changing lights, and it's kind of all falling in murals, so I don't know if that's kind of covered in murals, or is that a sign thing, the lights?
We have it both places, so with murals, there's special standards saying they can't be moving or lit. We have under prohibited signs, any signs, currently, we don't allow any signs that are flashing, rotating, or revolving at all, and we have a city policy.
Unless they're on singer fall. Unless they're on singer falls?
But that's a right of way, and so the sign code is not by a right of way.
Okay.
It's a lineal right of way.
And so the other question was projections.
It's, yes, okay, so.
Can you answer the first question before you go on to the next one?
Well, I think she just answered it, she just answered it.
But for the new sign code.
Elevators right of way as well.
For the new sign code, we will allow sign, electronic signs to change their text three times a day, whereas our current policy is one time a day. So it won't be, we don't allow strobe lights or anything that are interfering for traffic. But you will be able to have that text, you're not gonna be a full TV type sign that's always moving, so even if it's a clock, cause we're content neutral, we don't care what it is.
Isn't that a little unreasonable, three times a day?
So right now, it's one.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, well, but my, my, my point is, is that, you know, the whole purpose of having, you know, the, the, those billboards or whatever, however you wanna describe them, is to be able to change the message frequently enough that the people that own the sign can actually make some money and still get a message across, and typically, that's somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty seconds.
It was a big topic of debate, and it seemed like people clearly fell on one side or the other, and it was about split in the public, it was about split on our CAT team. And so staff defaulted to our current standard, which is once a day, and then when we went through Planning Commission, somewhere along the line, it got up to three, so.
The only, the only group that we heard a concern about the one time today was Clackamas Community College, who would like to be able to change the sign for, in the morning, welcome registration, and then in the afternoon, you know, we've got a softball game, and in the evening, we've got an. They, they didn't see any need to change it more than three times a day, the other one that you frequently see is gas stations. You're not changing it more than three times a day, so there was a concern about, you know, that, 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 there were, like Laura said, there were very strong feelings, you know, folks wanted the TVs that you see essentially, and other folks didn't want any part of it, and they wanted to make sure that there was no misinterpretation of what type of, folks just did not want moving, rotating signs. And so that's really your call, so we deferred to what was in place now, because there really was not consensus to go to those reader boards that are just constantly moving, or essentially become HDTVs.
They also create some serious traffic consequences from time to safety issues for motorists. So there's that to consider.
We see those on billboards right now on two oh five.
Yep, we went through it on another place, another place in time where I worked, they had one of the largest manufacturers of those signs in the country, was local, was one of our largest businesses. So you can imagine that where our city became very quickly proliferated with these things, and they were so intent, intense, the lighting, they even agreed to back off the lighting, ODOT was writing us a lot of letters, and the city council was under considerable pressure after about six months of letting these proliferate, cause they would shine through people's windows at night and keep them up.
Oh, I bet.
I mean, they were really intense, so until you've experienced that, it, it sounds like, well, anything should be okay, but when, when you actually see it up, it, there usually is a visceral reaction then, and it's, it's usually not a favorable one, and then how do you get that cat back in the bag once you've done that, it's, it's a tough one. But the three times a day, you know, you could always change it later too, if you want to, if you, you could change it now or later, if you don't like the three times a day, you could see how that's working. But since we're not getting a lot of requests for it, other than from the college, it seemed like we solved their problem without creating new ones.
The biggest user has been the college and the high school, we worked with the high school on the conditional use at Moss Campus, and they were fine, so we haven't heard a demand for more.
We, most of the signs that are prohibited in our current code are still prohibited, one of the new ones that we added as being prohibited are these type attention flags and the air blown signs, which are, you know, the guy you see at car lots. And abandoned signs, we had to come up with a definition of abandoned sign that was content neutral, so it means a sign that has no sign face for more than six months. We do have some requirements in here to try and maintain your sign as much as you can, so if it's missing a piece or something like that, but we can't regulate that the text be bright in color or anything like that. Non-conforming signs, our proposed code says if it was built legally, it can stay. If it's damaged significantly in one day, then it would have to come down. Current code says that if, even if it was constructed legally, it has to go away. Now I'm at the end, and we're going to come back with a full version of our code, and it will not have track changes, so it should be a little shorter and easier to read. At April first, are there any suggestions for these code changes?
Rocky, before we, can we just, maybe just briefly talk about how you would get us A-frame in the right of way? Because it's not just.
How we.
How we would, how someone would put an A-frame in the right of way, it's not just run out there first thing in the morning and stick it anywhere in the city that you'd like. So there is a process that we thought about on how to do that, and so maybe you just let them know what that would be, what that expectation is.
You would need a yearly permit, and when you get that permit, we give you a sticker that you place on the sign, so when enforcement happens, they can just walk down the street and see where the sticker is, and that's valid. The permit would include both a sign permit and a right of way permit, we're still working on the cost, but that'll come back to you at your work session next month. It's its first come, first served, you need the approval of the abutting property owner, so that person would essentially kind of regulate who puts their sign in front of that property.
Say that again?
So you would need, because otherwise.
I just, I wanna hear what you said the first time.
So if I wanna put my sign in front of a property in the right of way, I would need permission from that abutting property owner.
So if you're leasing a lease space, you need to ask the property owner that owns the building, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and if we have like political signs or signs that are not attached to a physical business or something, or like an internet something, then it's essentially up to that abutting property owner to decide who gets that one A-frame in front of their property, or if they wanna split it, you know, between tenants or whatever it is that they wanna do.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I couldn't go put my sign in front of ten different properties all downtown and say, go to my store and sell.
Tony's Restaurant couldn't run down and put my sign in front of Me Familia and Midway and all these other places and take the one sign.
Okay. Then there's a time restriction as well, and essentially, by doing the time restriction, each business would have to take in their sign every night. And to us, that means that hopefully they will look at their sign every night and better maintain their sign, since we can't, we have a limited ability for maintenance standards. So in residential, it has certain hours, which we talked about before, but in non-residential, it's a time early in the morning to a time late at night. So if we were to be driving along the street at midnight and you see a sign, it's not supposed to be there.
Commissioner Smith?
I guess my only concern with that is, part of the reason that they look so beat up is cause we have to drag them back in and out every night. There's, I mean, I don't know if you've ever, some of those are so heavy, it's a nightmare to get them in and out, so I don't know, I mean, if that's, if the, if the reason is to keep them looking nice, I don't know that that's necessarily gonna happen, but, cause that, the wear and tear is the hauling it in and out. I had one question about this diagram, but I don't know if, I don't think it's on the projection, the diagram that's on page six. I'm pretty good with visual diagrams, I have no idea what this is.
So on page six of our, so what we did is, we tried to make it easier to try and figure out what the area of a sign is and what we count, what we don't count. So on page six at the top, we tried to figure out, what if it's a weird shape or like a round circle, how are we counting how much square face it is, and so you project it onto a flat circle.
There's another kind of circle, it's not round?
See, you, if it's a cylinder, you're, you're projected onto something that's flat, and then count the square footage of that thing that's flat.
Okay.
It's, there's no pretty way to do it, we searched high and low to find.
I looked at this for so long today.
Yeah, I saw that too, and what the heck?
Yeah, if, any suggestions, let us know.
Commissioner Shaw?
So currently, the sign code is enforced by code enforcement? Or is it enforced, I guess?
Currently, the sign code isn't being enforced.
Isn't being enforced.
If there's dangerous, if there's safety issues.
Only if it's a safety issue.
Okay, so the seventy-five thousand dollar question is, are we gonna have to hire somebody now to be code sign enforcement person?
I think we're hoping to bring that back at the next work session to focus on the permit fees associated, what the expectations are for the education, the rollout, the enforcement, and how we plan to, to attack that.
We have a plan.
Okay.
Generally, your, your code is more restrictive today than it would be under this proposal, so in, on the one sense, you're broadening what's permitted, the code is becoming more permissive. The other side of that is, the previous commissions said to us, when they assigned this task to us, it's okay if it's more permissive, but whatever it's gonna be when it's done, we wanna enforce it. So that's really the second piece, and we're, we're not looking forward to enforcement until we have an extensive education campaign, because we believe the actual, you know, self-enforcement is best, and we're gonna need some time to do that, but, you know, on the one hand, there's more things that are permitted, on the other hand, we're gonna be enforcing it eventually. And that's the position we wanna be in, we want the commission to be in that, we, we don't like the idea of having things on your books that we are, we know we're not doing. It's, it just doesn't feel right, so.
Paul?
Yes, I have a, it does make me a little nervous, just in the fact that we haven't been enforcing it, but people have kind of been regulating it a little bit themselves to a certain extent. And now we're going to allow all these signs, and we can't regulate content, and I'm just afraid of kind of unintended things that may come up. Cause things can look good on paper, and then things can happen in real life that you're like, oh my goodness. So that, that makes me nervous. Back to the A-frames, I like the Grants Pass language, how it says per doorway instead of per frontage, because there's some buildings that are quite large and have different doorways for different businesses, and I think if only one sign is allowed per that frontage, is that how it is right now?
And I think Grants Pass is entrances, so.
Entrances, right.
A doorway that's only for, you know, dropping off the.
In, entrance, entrances.
We call it public entrance.
Public entrance.
Right, and, and essentially, in, in most locations, that would be a lease space. That entrance would be a separate business, a separate lease space, so I would be much more comfortable with that. And the other question is, in, other in row signs on streetlight banners, okay, the city owns the streetlights. So there's no way that, that we can say this is for events or nonprofits and exclude it for businesses or advertising purposes or campaigning. There's no way that we can say these uses are permitted, but these uses aren't permitted?
The problem with opening up a public forum, so you can't limit who, who can use the site.
Can you talk a little bit about Trimate being sued concerning their objection to the advertising that was proposed on their buses?
Yeah, so there was a case about.
And they lost.
Well, can, can I tell what they, what, what they happened, or what?
It was basically a, a sort of political message that someone wanted to put on the, on the side of the bus, and the bus, the Trimates said, you know, no, we don't wanna get involved in this kind of debate, and the courts said, no, you opened up the side of the buses to advertising these people, meant the rules that you had, you have to post their signs, so it's that same kind of thing, and that, you know, that has been a concern of the city attorney's office, is, you know, you open these forums and it can't say any message you want to say. And, and so if they're the first in line, you can't go to the second in line, because they have a better message that you like more.
But, but, but you can't, I, I understand you can't do that after the fact, but you can't state from the get-go that it's for certain uses?
You could say it's only for the city to use, for city messages, for city sponsored festivals, things like that. There are some cities that have gone so far as to actually remove the apparatus from the poles so that they don't have to have this, you know, so that it gets out of hand, they go, okay.
But you still, you still end up with the issue of, okay, let's just say the city's the only one that can put it up there, the city still has to make a decision of whether they're gonna accept a sign from somebody is what you're trying to get at, and we can't do it. You know, we can't say we're gonna accept it from Main Street.
If it's our sign only, then.
You know.
It could be a road sign or a street sign, something that's just ours.
Right, but if it was for advertising, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So you're saying those, those light pole banners, we can't set up a set of rules that says it's, we, it's only allowed for, for city sponsored events?
You could probably have a specific government forum, but you have to remember what is a city sponsored event, so if it's a nonprofit, nonprofits have all kinds of language, you know, I don't know who runs your farmer's market, but it's not the city, right? It's a nonprofit, so that wouldn't be a city sign to advertise the farmer's market with a banner, unless the city somehow became the farmer's market.
I'd like to hear, I, I, I'd like, with the consent of the rest of the commission, I'd, I'd like you to think on that some more and find a way for us to be able to do that.
Yeah, just, that, that one really makes me nervous, cause I just see all these businesses advertising and political signs and all sorts of things, I mean, it seems like there should be some way.
But at the same time, we don't wanna give up.
Right.
The ability to advertise the, you know, tree lighting or the, you know, whatever city event it is.
You guys have to get back to us with some sideboards on what the limitations are, what we can achieve.
Sorry, but I know this would probably be a concern that other citizens would have as well.
I actually believe, last year, LOC had commissioned some legal opinions and some other work on this there, I know there's been some information from the league that might be helpful, cause there are cities all around our state that have struggled with that same thing, what do we do with our banners? Some of them just have city, like, if it's a City of Roses, they have little roses hanging on every banner so that they don't have to get into that debate, but we'll see what the sideboards can possibly be from the city attorney's office and report back.
Commissioner West?
Well, so many of my questions have been answered, but, and it sounds like, you know, you can't regulate good taste, you can't regulate design. So then the next thing would be, how about materials, so one of the signs that, that kind of irked me are the, are the vinyl, if you don't have the money to put a permanent sign, everybody puts up, you know, temporary vinyl, so is that all okay?
In.
You know, the thin, I don't know what millimeter.
Kind of like a banner.
One step, one step up from a banner, yeah.
Yeah, well, they, they probably staple them or tape them or grommet them on a, on a building on the side, cause they don't pay for a.
So we have material standards and residential zoning designations, both single and two-family, multifamily, and conditional uses, which say that the signs have to be made primarily of stone, brick, it lists a bunch of natural materials, metal, and that if there's lighting, it has to be exterior, no internally lit, other than that, when you're in commercial zoning designations, there's nothing. As a side note, I didn't mention earlier, there, as a historic city, we do have some historic designations around here, so banners aren't allowed on historic properties. And also, if there is a historically designated property, it goes through a historic review board separately as well, so they would put additional standards on there.
Yeah, that, there goes your Ermit Tinker House and banners on.
Even temporary, like event, cause the McLaughlin House has a banner up on their porch every week, or on the McLaughlin House every weekend, so even those kind of banners.
Banners are only allowed.
Probably more historically correct than an actual sign, actually. Okay, that's an interesting one.
Then I'd like to finish. So I, then the last thing, I just wanna make sure that I understand, in a residential neighborhood, so it'd be on private property, what kinds of signs can be on, so like R ten, R eight, R six, whatever, residential neighborhoods, what kinds of signs can be in people's yards, private property?
You can pick either a wall sign or a projecting sign, and then you get two ancillary signs, and the list of ancillary signs includes, but it's not limited to, flags, signs in less than six square feet, A-frame signs.
Are you kidding me, so it's not a business, a residence can have these kinds of signs in their yard?
Yep, like for sale garage or just saying.
Reluct, Daffy West?
Picture of my new baby, yeah, or whatever it is, election signs are included, we did talk about elections time quite a bit, we could have in our sign code said between this month and this month, you can have more ancillary signs. But the group decided not to.
Okay, we're gonna have that discussion. Is that it, Daffy?
Yeah, and then the murals can also be, depending on where they're at, they could be, have HRB do them as well as an arts group. We're gonna leave a broad arts group for now, cause there is no formal Arts Commission, right?
So, yeah.
Did I understand that right?
We will match the language in our code in twel, in chapter two, and then if you're okay with the Planning Commission implementing that for now, it would either be them or you or HRB or something. So yes, we'll match that language.
Any else? So I have a couple, obviously, we just talked about the, the whole political sign thing, and I think that, you know, we're gonna have that discussion probably in another work session, cause we're already burned up more time on this than I really wanted to. The other thing is the murals, I, I've got a, I've got a really. I, I've got a, I've got a real issue with us allowing this huge sign and us not having any control over what it looks like. Because that means that we could have something that's by everyone's standard obscene and we would have to allow. So, I think we have to, I think we have to talk about that. Is there an answer to that?
The other end of that equation is you don't have to allow murals at all, other than the ones that are already existing. You could say no additional murals. You could probably grandfather those, but then there would be no, no additional ones. What you can't do is, is as tempting as it is, is get into that content situation.
Well, I'd be, I'd lean towards no more murals.
If you're going to allow one, you have to allow others regardless of how offensive they may be.
I, I have a question on that. So, the, in historic areas, the Historic Review Board, they review things that are done to these houses and in the neighborhoods and it goes through them. Would a mural have to go through them?
Yes, it would go through both, whatever board reviews murals and HRB as well.
So, in the recent renovation downtown at 10th and Main, that, that whole wall is now a quote sign slash mural, whatever you want to call it. Did that get any review, any permits, any anything? They just got lucky?
It didn't go through the Historic Review Board.
Currently, your code, this is what's proposed change.
Not within their boundaries for historic review.
Not a district.
Okay.
Not a historic district.
So, Mayor Holliday, it does sound to me, my hearing was, let me clarify, that it will, a mural can have some review of either HRB or planning commission.
Not about content, though.
Not about content, yeah. Only about size, placement, discretionary material.
Why don't we all ruminate on that? And then we can talk about it at the next work session.
I like murals downtown.
You really have limited options. You can have them all?
Or have none of them.
Yeah.
And grandfather the ones we have.
That's right.
I would lean that direction, but why don't we all think about it till the next work session? So, I want to, um, I, I see we have somebody that's on the list speak from the public. And I want to say that, um, between our, uh, our retreat and, uh, other discussions, we have decided that work sessions are for staff and the commission to iron out and have all these questions. If the public has comment or wishes to speak, they'll have an opportunity at the time that these things come into the regular, uh, the regular city commission sessions. So, I apologize, I didn't say that at the beginning, but, um, this time is really more valuable for us to use to communicate with staff and staff to communicate with us in a public forum. And then, uh, when we bring these, these things forward as, as ordinances or whatever, the, uh, the citizens will have an opportunity to speak then. Am I?
It's fine, but he's already signed up.
Yeah. So, with that...
Just, real quick, if I could just recap?
Real quick?
Yeah, the process.
So, we're going to talk, come back with murals to have a discussion about that at the next, at the next work session, including with how we're going to implement all this. Was there consensus or do you want us to bring back concerning A-frames and the number located? So, we can make that change now? Because right now, it's one per frontage. Was there agreement that there should be more based on the number of public?
I don't know if there's agreement, I certainly would want to have the discussion.
Okay, so we'll bring back something written up. We would really recommend limiting it to mixed use downtown in mixed use corridor one, rather than opening up. Okay, so we'll write something that resembles that.
So, we can actually write in those two options, Tony, and then let them choose one?
Right.
So, in addition to thinking about the, the mural and the all or none, also be thinking about the, this argument about the two, the two options with regard to these A-frames.
And...
One per entrance or...
And political signs. Time, place, and mayor.
And, and then the streetlight, the streetlights are going to be checked out. Okay, so those...
How many issues?
So, probably one, one last thing too, is the alleys. The alleys...
What about the alleys?
They're going to have businesses up them, they were narrow, they're going to have the sign out on the sidewalk directing people that way, which is going to be... How many?
We're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to fix everything all at once.
Yeah, I just got to think about that because these alleys are going to open up now to whatever, so...
I think we, I think we put the basic code in place. And then, as we encounter issues, we can tweak it based on those issues.
And right off the top of my head, right, uh, most of our alleys downtown are right-of-way. So, essentially, you're getting another frontage. So, if you were mid, if you were mid-alley entrance into a building, you could have an A-frame on that alley. But not out on the sidewalk, pointing down the alley. Right, well, that'd be the discussion, be the negotiation with the property owner who has that frontage as well. So, it's the same building, so where they put it is a negotiation between the property owner and the leasing.
Good.
You know, the sign code many times for cities is like social security is for Congress. So, kudos for the city for being willing to take this on, the citizens' group that did this work and our staff and the 37 meetings that they had. You can see why, I mean, all of you are experienced, uh, in public service and yet you see all the myriad of these issues. Also, keep in mind, you don't really, I mean, it's good to be thinking about all of the potential scenarios that one could encounter, but try to focus on those three areas where you guys have issues. Because the, the thing is a giant rabbit hole. If you think about it that way, you'll drive yourself crazy. And it's not necessarily, implementation is the job of the staff. So, keep in mind that there's going to be some discretion, like when Laura was talking about accessible to the public. You know, we're going to figure that out. You probably don't want to try to define that because then it, it gets awkward and you may have unintended consequences. So, you're better off having staff that have training and are reasonable people who can think and try to figure out how to administer. And that's why we're going to have such a big dose of education, six, eight, 10 months of education before we actually start enforcement. And even, even then, enforcement will ramp up very gradually so that, um, you know, we'll start with warnings and then some tutoring and, you know, we'll, we'll keep working at it. But ultimately, you're going to have a better city because you're enforcing your values through this code. And that's, that's always important. That's always going to feel good. There's always going to be anomalies, of course. And then, if we need to make adjustments, as the mayor mentioned, then we will bring those back and, and recommend those to you.
We done?
Thank you.
Okay, so, next one is, uh, review of the noise ordinance 15-040, uh, Police Chief Jim Band. And, uh, I believe Captain Greg Frye is going to present this, is that right?
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to start and, uh, Captain Frye is going to take us home.
Take us home, baby.
How much you ready to drink? So, Mayor and Commissioners, I, I got to start by saying I was worried about this, uh, the noise ordinance being a little bit confusing or a little bit kind of nebulous. But after the sign, this is going to be a pretty simple one to talk about, I think.
No, this is a question.
So, this was brought to our attention by, um, uh, somebody in the community. Uh, and I'm just going to say, uh, thank Jesse Bus, uh, who did a lot of work. Usually, people just come, uh, and say, hey, there's this problem, can you fix it? And, uh, Jesse's been a, a ton of help and offered a lot of suggestions. And, uh, um, we've had some great meetings, having a discussion about this noise ordinance. In a nutshell, what, what we had was one sentence in our, uh, disorderly conduct code. It was a criminal code. And so, we started looking at different options. And what, uh, let me go through this, kind of the, what, what's gotten us to this point here and, and tell you what we're looking for. What we got from, uh, submitted was one version, a very lengthy version that really, um, in a nutshell, there were decimal readings, uh, it was very structured. Every, kind of every noise you could think of was, was listed in there, uh, to naming what kind of power tools, you know, people could use in their, in their lawn, a noise review board and these sorts of things. Uh, our concern with that sort of a model was, how usable is that, uh, in this community? And kind of in the back of our mind, going from nothing to our first whack at a noise ordinance, we could always adjust later, but not wanting to, uh, I like the term, you don't need a hammer to kill a fly. And, uh, so we were looking at something that, that seemed a little bit, uh, a little bit more workable for, for our community. What, uh, I gave this to Captain Frye to start working on. What he did was started looking at other cities and what models they had. The lengthy model that we were given that had to do with the noise meter was based on a Portland model. They have literally on staff a sound engineer who can go. And we also talked with the city prosecutor, the judge. And, uh, after a lot of talk, several meetings, a few arguments, we, we came up with the version that is in front of you, uh, that is basically based on a, a reasonable standard. What is a, what is a reasonable person, uh, believe would be a violation of the noise ordinance? While there are people who, who are, believe firmly that, uh, noise should be, uh, controlled. There are people who I've, I've mentioned at our chief's advisory and some other meetings, just kind of getting their reading, who kind of said, geez, what are we going to start policing noise and what's this world coming to? So, it kind of, we were looking for something that fit the entire community. What is in front of you is, is what we think is, uh, would do that. And if we had to come back later, uh, we would, we would do so if this did not work. Some of the questions, we didn't want to get too far down the road without getting a sense from you of, of what you thought on this topic. There were a couple of questions that went back and forth that we didn't believe it was up to us to decide. One of them is, is the, the hours. 10:00, 10:00 P.M. to 7:00 P.M., or essentially what we...
7:00 A.M.
7:00 A.M.
Excuse me, yeah, 7:00 A.M. Uh, are what we have listed as quiet hours. And that's based on what other cities around us utilize. The 10 o'clock comes from our parks are open till 10 o'clock. And so, that seemed like a good fit. But that is something that we thought that maybe you guys should weigh in on. So, I'm sure you've had a chance to read it. There is, I know a letter that you've been given, uh, from Judge McNeese. And, and she kind of weighed in on this. The city prosecutor also likes the model that we've come up with and believes that this will be a good tool for us to actually be able to solve some problems out there. And, uh, if you have any questions, uh, between myself or Captain Frye, who did the majority of the work on this, we should be able to answer them for you.
Uh, just one thing right off the top of my head, it seems like we missed construction. It, you talk about mechanically produced sounds, but, you know, hammers, handsaws, all of those kinds of things. And especially, you know, when we've got housing, um, those need to come under the same, uh, under the same restrictions, 10:00 P.M. to 7:00 A.M. So, construction wasn't really addressed in that first set. It is, did I miss something?
Power tools?
Hammer isn't a power tool.
Like, oh, two, four, half?
New noise ordinance is...
You want it a little broader to be...
Yeah, that's right, hand tools are power tools, probably.
For construction sites? Actually, it's construction sites, starting how early in the morning?
I, I, I think you should say, I, I think you should have a section in there that says, "construction." Because that can mean, you know, I mean, you could have four trucks pulling up and idling at 6:00 o'clock in the morning waiting for, you know, 7:00 o'clock to show up. Only because I've been doing it for 25 years.
Pardon?
That does happen places.
Oh, yeah.
So, you want that to follow the same times?
Yes.
How, and, and so, exactly, you're saying add hand tools, essentially?
I'm saying all, all noises, uh, reasonably associated with the construction of a building.
Should, should not happen until after 7:00?
After 7:00 o'clock.
Do you add that onto D?
I don't think you want to say a building. You don't really care what it is, right?
Okay.
Whether it's a building or not. What, what I think we know is that you want to include construction-related sounds.
Yes.
And then we'll have the city attorney draft the appropriate language.
So, that could be actually F then, down instead of his power tool?
Yeah, let them figure out that stuff.
Or gra, you know, idling trucks, that's interesting.
So, that was one of the, uh, the concerns that the person that asked for a change in the, uh, the ordinance wanted to consider was the order vehicles.
Yeah, there certainly are enthusiastic home remodelers as well as professional remodelers that like to get up at the crack of dawn and, on their weekends to make use of their time. You present, that's what I'll ask.
Or the folks that have grandma and grandpa in their 47-foot motorhome firing up the generator.
Well, another conversation was, had to do with long-haul truck drivers and, and where they park and where they idle and where their refrigerated trucks were, uh, the reefers essentially, where those are idling.
Is Greg going to make a presentation? Request to speak.
Oh, now I have to go. Waiting.
Come on, you guys, get with it.
Okay.
Daphne West?
So, the 7:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M., I thought the 7:00 A.M., um, well, I just wanted to hear what my fellow colleagues would say. I was thinking weekends, 7:00 A.M. sounded a little early. And I was wondering if, uh, so, I'll give you my perspective. In the McLaughlin neighborhood, where our neighborhood is, you know, bifurcated by, um, a lot of arterials. You've got 7th Street, you've got Washington Street, you have 99, you have, uh, Main Street. And there's a lot of other kinds of, um, you know, activities going on. And I just think in the weekends, it'd be nice for some of it if we said maybe eight. Nine is probably not reasonable on my part, but maybe eight? But 7:00 A.M. on the weekends, do you want the leaf blowers and, um, all the tools and things going?
I, I think you have to have a reasonable place. And it seems like that's about as close to reasonable as you can get. Certainly because, again, we're talking about commercial activities as well. And remember, we're all here because we're trying to promote business and all that sort of thing. So, uh, you have to find a happy medium somewhere.
And, and there's other noises at 7:00 A.M. too. There's, uh, church bells and churches and that type of thing. And businesses starting up and health clubs with their music and everything else.
Yeah, what are you going to do about the sea lions, Jim?
That's the way we can take care of it.
Different ammo in the show, Chuck. So, just to be clear, your response, because we're writing this down for the future, what you're saying is on the weekends that you believe 7:00 A.M. is reasonable? Or, I'm just trying to get, to gauge where exactly...
I don't think we've, I don't think we've gotten there yet.
Not sleeping in, but, uh, there's people that work nights, there's, you know, it's just a weekend.
7:00 o'clock sleeping in for me.
Huh?
Well, there are other towns that consider holidays too, eliminating the noise on holidays.
It's just a discussion.
Could we ask...
But if we go, if we go there, what does that do? That just gives somebody an excuse to call you because somebody's having a party that normally they wouldn't do it.
Mayor, if I can suggest to have the captain remind the commission what we current, what our current times are? And then, and then throughout, then you guys can try to reach a consensus. I think it's important, you can't make a decision tonight, but if there's a consensus on what a reasonable time looks like. And if there isn't, think about it till next time when we come back and we'll see if there is one.
And this is good discussion.
Captain Fred?
Our current, uh, noise ordinance is basically a model of disturbing the peace or a disorderly conduct by Oregon law, which is a Class B misdemeanor. And that's what the city ordinance currently is, it's a misdemeanor. What we're trying to do is move, um, that to a violation. So, what we presented in this draft, these would all be violations. If there was some extreme condition or, uh, circumstances, we could arrest for disorderly conduct. But we felt that in coming up with what noises are prohibited, uh, in the enforcement piece, that, uh, you know, when responding to a barking dog and we're not going to go and arrest somebody for having a barking dog or a violation would be, would, would be better suited for that. Uh, you know, we wanted to make, uh, the document legal, we wanted to make it simple, and we wanted to be easily enforced. wanted to be easily enforced. We, there are five, five points in here, what noises are prohibited, the exemptions, who has the authority to enforce it, the enforcement piece, and then the penalty. The penalty would be $300 violation on each offense. I went and spoke with the municipal court judge, our city prosecutor, some police officers who would enforce this, the citizen who drafted the proposal, the original proposal, some members of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. And like the chief said, every, we found that there were a lot of opinions, and people wanted reasonable things in the ordinance, and some things were unreasonable. So I looked at what other neighboring cities have for their city ordinance, and thought that put together this piece that we thought was best suited for our city.
Before, are you done?
I was going to start again.
You were going to start again? Okay. But hold it, hang on a second. So notwithstanding my earlier comments, given the considerable amount of hours and effort that Mr. Bus put into this, if you had something to say, I'd invite you to come up.
At this point, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that opportunity, and commissioners.
Let me just pull out my draft here.
Thanks for all your work on this.
My pleasure. So I just wanted to keep my comments brief this evening on the current draft that's before you, and primarily say that as a neighborhood, I'm not formally authorized, I don't believe, to speak on behalf of the neighborhood association, but with lots of discussions with neighbors and in the association, there's a consensus that we support longer quiet hours. We had proposed 9:00 PM to 8:00 AM, not only on weekends, but on all days. But certainly, weekends would be higher priority than regular weekday mornings. Also, under 9.12.023, noise is prohibited, Sub B, which is noisy animals. We are advocating for 10 minutes per hour of barking rather than 15, just to lower that threshold a bit. Because if you've ever experienced the barking of 10 minutes out of an hour, it's still difficult. So also, I wanted to point out, the penalty in Happy Valley, which has a very similar ordinance, and has had it for about 10 years since they last amended it, according to the chief code enforcement officer over there, it works very well. They have a $500 maximum fine instead of 300. And he said what they do as a standard policy is they issue that ticket for the maximum amount each time, and then let the judge have discretion to reduce. So as the neighborhood generally supports that $500 fine instead of the 300. And I believe there's going to be a discussion about alternative enforcement models from the captain, is that correct?
Go ahead.
Well, I don't want to cut you off.
No, that's fine.
So in the, not the enforcement section, but the authority in Section 912.025, Sub B, it talks about a person other than a code enforcement officer or sworn police officer may enforce the provisions of this ordinance pursuant to ORS 153058. And I don't have enough copies to provide to everyone of that statute, but the actual language of that statute limits the authority of that statute to traffic violations, fishing violations, hunting violations, stuff like that. And I don't think it provides that exact authority. But the model that that statute has for citizen citation is good. I just suggest that that exact citation be-
Can I, I want to ask a question of the attorney. Under our code, we can issue that authority to our police officers under our charter, right? I mean-
Well, you can authorize members of the public under the charter because you're a home rule city.
Right.
So the reference to the ORS section is to identify the process, but not be limited by that subsection eight that Mr. Bus is concerned about.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe just changing some words, so it doesn't say pursuant to ORS, say pursuant to the process delineated in, or something like that.
Okay.
But of course, that's technicalities. Just above that, in subsection three, under code enforcement, officer or sworn officer must have witnessed the violation occur for issuance of the citation. Happy Valley doesn't have that, and I know they're not the model here, but you know, it's an illustration. They, in their system, almost every citation that's issued does have a witness, a citizen witness, and it doesn't require the officer to actually observe it. Because in the majority of situations, I think an officer is not going to observe it. It's going to be an event that maybe is low priority, and the officers have somewhere better to be, and by the time they get there, the problem's over. So if you have credible evidence coming from a citizen observer, like Happy Valley, I think that could be done here as well. And that's what I'll limit it to tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Captain Fred.
Yes.
Any response?
The, as far as the authority in the enforcement piece, the, we wanted to, violations have to be observed by an officer doing it, just like a traffic offense. You have to be able to see it to issue a citation. We added the piece in there for the citizen because a lot of times, we arrive there, the noise isn't going on, they may have a scanner, we leave, the noise goes back up. So this piece gives the opportunity for the citizen to take some enforcement on their own that we may not witness. And we thought that was a very, very important piece to have, have in this, in this code. We, you know, if you go down to the enforcement, the enforcement piece, it outlines what's going to occur in the first, the second, and subsequent offenses. You know, every time that we go there, you know, it's going to be a warning, we're going to go next door to the place and advise them of the warning, the circumstances, in some cases, who complained about the type of noise. Any second or subsequent offenses of the same nature, we have an opportunity to go back and issue a citation for that. And if, like I said, if it's not observed by the officer, then the person reporting it can issue a citation with the officer.
Let me just weigh one thing in on that, that's kind of important when you think about the application of this thing. And keeping in mind of this conversation, if it's not something that is easy for the officer to discern and enforce, you know, there are traffic issues that we're pushing them to be out addressing, there are criminal issues, and so in the context of everything that they do, this is extremely important, but so are a lot of other things. And one of the problems with, if you created some kind of an ordinance that allowed them to, or said that the officer did not have to sight without seeing it, you're putting the officer in a position where they're going to a neighborhood, and at 10 officers, if you have, if you have somebody in the community saying, my neighbor's doing X, and I think it's unreasonable, and I don't like it, some of our officers might agree with it. Some of our officers might say, I don't really agree with you. You live in a city, I live out in the country, why don't you, if you want quiet, go live in the country like I do. And so it's kind of, I think it is more clear if, if they're not put in that position where they're sighting based on something that they don't see. Now, the flip side of that is, the good thing about having it there is you can say, look, I didn't see it, I'm not sure what the behavior is, but if you want to cite them, you can cite them. And it's another option. Now, they can say, look, I don't want to do that, I don't want to be the bad guy. The reality is, is whether the officer cites or the person cites, I think some people believe, well, my neighbor won't, the neighbor's going to know that you called. Whether we're citing you or they're citing you, they're going to know that you did it. So that's kind of the, that's kind of the tough piece about whether or not it's the officer or the, but on the flip side, if our officers go and they see something, they're going to be citing, that's going to be our expectation to them, that they're not pawning it off and just saying, well, it's up to you if you want to cite. No, if you see it, and there's a complaint, then cite, and they're going to be one of your witnesses.
Anything else, sir?
One more thing to say.
Okay.
The current ordinance is just too vague. It doesn't list the hours the noises are prohibited, what kind of noises are prohibited, and it doesn't address animals. And we get animal complaints, and we can't do anything about it when we respond there.
They're so obnoxious.
And so this ordinance would give us a little bit of bite to go there and to fall back on something.
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I just will take 30 seconds.
Go ahead.
I really meant to thank several people as well. Chief Ben, Manager Fraser, and Captain Frye, we're all very engaged in this, and the community wanted to express their appreciation for that joint effort, and it's led to something good.
Well, I appreciate your engagement and help in this come forward.
Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Smith.
In our packet, these were labeled as current and new, but I'm assuming the new one still keeps the entire section disturbing the peace, right? Even with B? Or is that-
I don't really see a reason to take it out. The whole idea, the difference between a crime and a violation, like a traffic ticket, that's a violation. The government cannot put you in jail for a violation, it's just a numerical, you know, a dollar fine. A crime is something that we can put you in jail for.
Okay. I think, this is really well written, I think we've talked, I've-
You should have seen the original.
I know, I heard about it. So I was anticipating reading through something that was going to have a lot of questions and a lot of concerns, and I just don't see any, I don't see that many. I guess that in terms of the hours, I think it's really hard for us to do anything other than what the park hours are. I think, you know, trying to enforce or trying to make an argument when the parks are open till 10 o'clock, I think that's going to be really hard, especially when those parks are used for festivals and concerts and all kinds of things. So I think, you know, any event that's held in a city park that can stay open till 10 o'clock, then with noises and sounds, I think you have to be consistent with that. I do kind of wonder about the weekends, you know, I mean, I like to sleep in, too, but I don't really care about the seven. I'm just wondering, there are events, I know some cities would have 10 o'clock as the cutoff for events, things like that in the city, because it's tied to parks, and that some go a little bit later on Friday, Saturday nights. And I'm just saying that because if you ever go downtown Oregon City, let's say anywhere between 12 and 1 o'clock in the morning, it's loud, it's really loud, which maybe that's what we don't want, I don't know. But I think, especially for events, you know, the events in our city parks are held till 10, which is fine, but if it's a summer event that's happening somewhere in the city on a Friday, Saturday night, are they able to go a little later, or is it cut off at 10? So that's the only question. I don't really have too much worry about 7:00 AM, but our parks are 10 to, 5? Yeah, 10 to 5. So I wouldn't keep it exactly tied to the parks. I think that's really the only thing, I think the questions that I was looking for were answered in here, like I think the exceptions for New Year's Eve, and the exceptions for Fourth of July, and the exceptions for various different things. I think the outdoor events thing, we might want to actually specifically say festivals. I think what it says there kind of implies that, but it doesn't really say that. And I guess the only-
Say city authorized gatherings?
There's other festivals.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how you'd word it, but-
Well, I mean, you know, if you're, almost any large gathering requires a permit unless it's a party at a private house, right?
Yeah, but I would not say city authorized, I wouldn't say it that way.
Permitted activities? Let's figure out a, let's figure out a phrase to fix that.
Yeah, I see that as a thing for possibly events, but also possibly filming in this city. You know, if they get a permit and, you know, I know there would still be a lot of town, but-
So we could simply say permitted events.
Right. Okay. Are you done, Mr. Smith?
Yep.
Mr. West?
I'm wondering if, we're talking everything in general, we're not talking residential versus commercial. I'm wondering if we said the, you know, we made some delineation there, does that make any sense?
Actually, it does.
No.
There you go.
Well, I mean, it's an interesting thought, but we're trying to make this something that's workable, that our folks in the field can use. And really, I mean, the two residents that brought this to us were both experiencing this kind of stuff in neighborhoods, in this neighborhood. And some of it was just pervasive, I mean, they were at their, you know, kind of at the end of the rope, trying to figure out a solution. And what we want to do is give our officers more of a tool, without taking away their discretion to use common sense and their training that they've got. And so, you know, if we don't have to say something, it's probably better if we don't say it. And so we've written it intentionally with some vagueness in there to leave room for officers to have discretion.
Right.
Can I just say one thing, Mr. Mayor, too? I want to say one thing, that I made a promise to Mr. Bus, that I don't know if I'll ever say this to anybody again. I said, I promise you at the end of this thing, you're going to be happy with what we come up with. And I have not forgotten that. And so I'm just, one of the things that I want to say is that we're not going to, our plan in applying this is not to put it in place and hope it never comes up again. I'm going to watch this, we're going to watch it, we're going to watch our people, we're going to say, look, you guys, go pay attention when you're applying this, and if it does not work, if we were wrong in our application, we'll come back and say, hey, we need to fix this, to make sure that the tool worked the way we thought it would.
Chris Pauling?
Yes, thank you. Well, I think-
Oh, I didn't see it, I didn't have a request to speak here, so.
Let me do it. Can I do it? I think Brian's first.
There you go.
There you go.
Too late. Go ahead.
New guy's gone again.
Okay, let me see, let me get back up again.
Down the bottom.
Okay. I think this goes a long ways to help livability in our city. I had a barking dog in our neighborhood who barked 24 hours a day. And there was nothing that we could do about it, so I think that's great. And to kind of answer Daphne's question about the delineation of businesses or, you know, commercial, it says, under unreasonable noises, the ordinary and usual sounds, noises, commotion, or vibration incidental to the operation of these places when conducted in accordance with the usual standards of practice, which are not unreasonable. So I think that gives a good-
The trash truck is still going to come on whatever.
Right. Because you know that you live next to-
The recycling.
Recycling.
The recycling, yes, the glass.
Seems like Gillis Street comes to life for some reason.
It's good to be able to, you know, have some judgment there.
Mr. Shaw?
Well, Chief Ben hit that right, is, you know, this is a work in progress here, you know, so, and it's come a long ways here. And it kind of gets down to just how busy we want our police officers to be, aside from doing their job, or their job, too, you know? Because this could get deeper, more extensive, but I think what we've got here is a nice model to really get started with, and it's something that residents and officers can control and work with. So I think the only thing is, I think I agree with Mr. Bus, that this barking animal could be at 10 minutes instead of 15. That 15 minutes is a long time, as you probably know with a barking animal.
24 hours.
Does anyone object to that? Does any, do any of you object to that? Okay.
No.
All right. Thanks.
Last, I'll go- Last, I'll go last. Did you want to go again?
Well, since we can't make decisions at work session, we're just giving directions, so, do we have any direction from this group, any consensus, or any, on the weekends, having a little later start time for noise?
I don't think you're going to get the consensus on that.
Well, we only had a couple-
Your one vote.
We only had a couple of areas.
Voting.
Well, let's try, we haven't really tried, maybe, we haven't exhausted that. We, we've got a consensus now on, what, 10 minutes for the animal. So, Jim, you've got two others in there, right, that you need consensus on?
Well, I think we're at weekends, right?
Right, right. The hours on weekends.
Churches, churches.
Yeah, but that would be a reasonable thing, like you were just saying, it's reasonable, they've been ringing their bells for 100 years at the Lutheran church, so-
So, is it unreasonable that-
It's the construction crews and, you know, some of that kind of stuff that start real early.
But is it unreasonable to, to think that, you know, a construction company works six days a week?
Well, that's, that's the question.
And, and keep in mind, there are some issues, we've had, certainly, Mr. Bus and others have lived, and you, Ms. Polly, have, our Commissioner Polly, have, have dealt with this, and many, many others have. We're not getting overrun with complaints right now about construction, or in, in weekends in particular, so I would encourage you to try to strike a balance that seems reasonable, based on your own common sense and life experience.
I would say Monday through Saturday, Sunday, if you wanted to move it to 9 or 10 in the morning, I think that's a reasonable thing to do. But, I think Monday through Saturday are normal, I mean, I've, I've been in the construction industry for almost 30 years, that's a, I mean, typically, I prefer to start at 6:00, but, you know, we're doing commercial construction, so we aren't out in a neighborhood. And typically, most of the construction that, that goes on here in Oregon City is not infill. We have a little bit of that.
And if you're, and if you're an emergency responder working evenings, none of this works for you anyway, right, Jim? I remember that. So, so Chief Ben might also be able to tell you a little bit of what they've been hearing in, in their meetings to help you find a balance here as well, because you've gotten some feedback from folks that you've talked about the ordinance.
Well, yeah, some people just don't want, want anything, you know?
Well, of course not.
And, and, and so, it, you know, I completely, I, I know that people, especially, I know a lot of home builders are working on Saturdays, and they all, they start the same time they do on the weekends, which, or during the weekdays, which is 7:00, a lot of them.
And I know most home builders, most home builders, standard, they know they can't, I mean, it's almost universal across the Portland metro region that you can't start before 7:00 in the morning, if you're in a neighborhood. Now, if you're building a subdivision that's, you know, away from everybody else, you can get special dispensation to start earlier from the local jurisdiction.
So, I think, Mayor Holliday, what I'd suggest is that we just go as planned here, unless revisited in a year, and by that time, we will have cause to make changes, probably if we need to change those hours. Commissioner West, how you understand that, I mean, you put up with a train.
I'm not worried about the train.
Yeah, but I just thought we might-
You could start going to bed earlier, then you could get up there. So, I have one last comment. Under 9.12.024G, and these are the exemptions, we talked about commercial construction equipment, yet we've just exempted commercial construction equipment. Why, why did we do that?
I missed that.
So, I, so I think, well, no, but I mean, that's my point, I think we need to take commercial construction equipment out of the exemption.
I noticed that, well, we'll-
I missed good catch.
Combine F into the whole construction noise category that we were discussing, and limit it to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else?
Ice cream trucks.
Ice cream trucks.
I've got to say it.
What's ice cream trucks in?
Uh, I won't talk about the other part of it, but I'll, so, yeah, ice cream truck, 10 o'clock at night or 7:00 in the morning?
No, I think, isn't there a, so, we're not using any decimal levels, right?
Correct.
So, would an ice cream truck parked outside of your house blasting full blast that same song over and over and over and over again be considered unreasonable? Because I certainly would.
But it's exempted.
I know, that's the point.
Commissioner Smith pointed out that it was a food truck, which is not legal.
There, there's still that broad base, though, that allows for judgment for unreasonable, so you could say it's unreasonable, right?
Clean that up.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, are we done picking at Nits now?
Yeah.
Are we?
I don't know, I'm asking the question. All right. So, City Managers Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, Katie Riggs is going to hand out to you a draft, draft copy of your 2015, 2017 commission goals that we have assembled as a result of your retreat. We need your feedback if you see a mistake, an error, or something else that bothers you in that document that you have before you within the next four or five days, because we'll be assembling a booklet that will look very much like your last goals booklet, and that'll be on your next agenda for approval. And they're in my folder, and I'm going to hand them out right now. These.
Did you send us that electronically already?
Yes.
Then just don't give me one.
Just in case.
We already have it.
We think, we think it pretty much nails it, but we'll be surprised if there's any, any comment, but again, we wanted to give you one last shot at it before we actually put it into publication, put it on your agenda. And then, Chief Ben is, and the Police Department have already started their public outreach on how to provide a funding mechanism for the, the new police building at Mount Pleasant, and Jim's going to give you just a little bit of information on his first couple of meetings on that topic.
Yes, so far, so good. It's been, the, the reviews have been very positive, and to the point where I've even asked, "Look, if there's something negative, I want you to hit me with it." Some of the things that have been said more than once, are they like the fairness piece of it being distributed to everybody as opposed to just property owners? They like the fact that a lot of thought went into not just the, the utility, but also the project in general, the purchase of the property, the treatment of Mount Pleasant, the school. I've also heard, and this was numerous times before, but, but more recently, they really like the, the fact that it sunsets and whatever guarantee, you know, they, there's, the, I've heard that people want to make sure that that sunset piece is loud and clear, that that will go away once the debt service was completed, and got some great feedback on just kind of tailoring our message and making it as simple and clear to the public as possible, so.
Well, I think one of the things that we can thank earlier commissions for is that when we transitioned from Clackamas, from Oregon City Fire Department to Clackamas Fire Risk 1, we made that promise about, you know, not taking that piece for a certain amount of time, and, and the city didn't do it, in fact, we were still not, have still not reached our cap, so we can go use that as a, as a, as an argument, saying, "We've already done this once before, and we kept our word, so you can trust us to do that again."
All right, thank you, Chief. And next, I know all you received emails from us last, I think it was Friday, kind of a flurry of emails about the rockfall on Singer Hill, so, Mr. Lewis has a short update on that activity as well.
How's that bump on your head, Jim?
Good.
It was nice to finally see the police chief in action.
Don't you live in Oregon City, Mr. Lewis?
I caught, I, I, I'll just start by saying, I've got, I've caught a lot of grief about public works and our road closure, and how long does it take to pick up a rock, so I had to throw, I had to lube that little bone a little bit.
Have to give my light work to someone.
Actually, to be honest, John, when I got that, I pulled into town, and I parked my rig, and I walked up to the bottom of Singer Hill, and I looked up there, and I went, "How long does it take to pick up a little rock like that?"
A little while.
Understanding that, you know, you had to go up and make sure that no other rocks were going to fall, so, go ahead.
So, we have had a geotech and what we call rock scalers, guys that were basically climbing the slope there to knock down some of the loose rock. The concern is, though, that there's really some man-made rock placement on that slope that happened, we don't know how long ago, just below the property at 813 Center Street. So, it's just, the, the slide is just north of the church's parking lot, there's that residential home there, it's a home that's been a long time owned by that res, that family, and there, we talked to them and worked with them. The problem is, is the slide is, is got a potential to impact their patio area, and it's encroaching onto private property, and yet, there's still these unstable rocks that sit up on that slope up there, and we were a little bit, when we had the scalers there and the geotech there on Saturday, the concern was that if we started poking around too much more, we are going to further open up a bit of a can of worms, and, you know, there's, the challenge is, is a lot of that slope is covered with ivy. The ivy's actually helpful in this case, to some degree, but it also kind of hides the problem. And so, in their search, they've determined that, you know, we do have some risk associated with that slope, we need to, the, we need to work with that property owner to the degree we can, but it's our responsibility to reduce our liability in the public right of way. So, we're looking at options, including more of a post-mounted fence protection that would be fairly high along the barriers there, and we, we're just now starting to get, you know, design ideas and cost estimates for that, we've decided-
We couldn't use the kind of drapery like they use along 99 E going to Candy?
The problem is, is anchorage, so we're looking at options. Unfortunately, most of the area where the slide is happening, there's not a good place to anchor it to.
Right.
So, but we're looking at those options. So, I guess the update tonight is, we, we expect to have solutions presented in the next week or so here, and I think it's going to be, it's going to have some expense associated with it. We're going to work at protecting the public right of way first, and work with the property owner to the degree we can, but-
So, is that a slide? I mean, because when I drive up there, it looks like a basalt wall.
I would say a, a big portion of it is, but as you move up that slope, in that particular location, it's soft soil with man-placed rock along that slope there, and why they did that, and when they did that, is kind of uncertain, how much, because of the ivy, it's difficult to tell, but it looks like it's been modified by manpower.
Doesn't the ivy actually, I mean, in the short term, it's probably, you know, keeping little stuff from falling down, but in the long term, it's drilling into the rock and creating more issues, right?
That's true, those, yeah, that's true. So, the question is, is when do we, you know, open that up, or do we open that up, or do we just protect the right of way?
Or do we just cross our fingers and hope somebody doesn't get killed?
Well, that's, so that's the reason for some kind of barrier.
That's what we're not doing.
Well, I wasn't suggesting that, you know, I'm just saying-
But there's, they're going to study it further with the geotech, and they'll, they'll report back to the commission when we have, I'll either send you an email update, or we'll have another update here. And then, last but not least, I'll be traveling to Salem tomorrow with some other staff, we're going to be meeting with the state legislators and lobbyists regarding the Willamette Falls Legacy Project funding. As you know, we're asking for a robust amount this year from the state for that project, and also for House Bill 2800, and Mayor Holliday will be joining us on, by phone, for one or two of those meetings as well. So, that's, that's it from the staff.
No, there was one more thing that you were going to bring up in Management Report.
Oh, the room arrangements for committees, right?
And the bicycle thing.
Oh, yeah, Mayor Holliday mentioned to me that he would like to, ask to research what current regulations we have regarding lighting on bicycles, both headlights and taillights, and I think the police are still looking into that, but if there's a need for an ordinance change, we'll bring that back to the commission, and so that we can have safer motorists, motorists and bicyclists' interactions.
And the reason I brought this up is because I've had, like, three close calls in the last two months with, you know, kids in the neighborhood of, you know, 14 to 18 or 20 years old, you know, riding down the middle of Lynn Avenue completely in black, you know, one time, the car, he was going downhill in the uphill lane just before the big turn, and it's like, you know, so, at some point, if we don't start enforcing something along these lines, we're going to have a kid get killed, and that's just going to look bad, if we haven't at least done everything we can to make it, you know?
Keep people safe.
Yeah.
So, we'll be working on that, and Chief Ben will bring something back when he has more.
And then, do we want to actually talk about that tonight?
No.
Okay. All right, so I have, I'm doing the conference call with Representative Barton tomorrow, and I have a phone call with Commissioner Nick Fish on Thursday to talk about Willamette Falls Legacy Project and some other things, trying to maybe have a genuine relationship with the City of Portland, so we're-
Ask for money for the Ermitaker House as well.
Like I said, I'm trying to have a genuine relationship with the City of Portland.
Mayor, I neglected also to mention one other thing on my reports, and that is that, well, that escapes me now. If it comes back before we're done, I'll let you know.
And I don't think I'm going to talk about the meeting on Friday, okay? So, that's it for me.
What meeting on Friday?
Never mind.
All the secret meetings, yeah.
So-
Oh, I know what it was, it came to me.
Okay.
The Oregonian is interviewing some of our staff in the morning, and they may be calling you about House Bill 2800, they're going to ask a few questions of staff about the bill, and what we're trying to accomplish with Tri-City and the accountability of the district.
So, let's limit that to Commissioner Polly and myself.
That's what we've suggested.
Okay.
That's it.